Good evening, everyone. Today is Monday, February 27th. And this is a regular meeting of the Asbury Park Planning Board. Chairman Karzak, can you please call us to order?
Yes. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coast and Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice imposed on the municipal board, Bolton Board, and municipal website. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before the Board. Fire exits are located on east and west sides of the council chambers, as well as the back of the building. I will ask everyone with a cellphone or other device to kindly silence your device for the duration of the meeting. This meeting is being recorded by AP-TV for your viewing pleasure in the near future. Please join me for a pledge of allegiance.
I will now take roll call. James Bonanno.
Here.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton.
Here.
Eric Gallopo.
Here.
Michael Gunnon is absent tonight. Jim Henry.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Daniel Shanameo.
Here.
Jennifer Souter.
Here.
Vice Chair Rick Lambert is absent this evening. And Chairwoman Barbara Karzak.
Here. All right, on the agenda, we have a resolution for 545 Lake Avenue, which is going to be moved to March 6th. I don't believe that we need to get a roll call or anything like that having to do with that. We received some more modifications, so we will be reviewing those. And Mr. Surferco will have another one for another version of that resolution available to us on Thursday.
This Thursday?
This Thursday, because our next meeting is on the 6th.
Okay.
Okay. You're welcome.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is, the 6th.
Wow.
You had a long break, and now we're back.
No, I have no problem, but I'm glad you said it.
We're back.
7 o'clock or 5:30?
7 o'clock.
5:30?
5:30? Oh, we could do from 5:30.
I do know if it's a special meeting.
No, no, it's not a special meeting. 7 o'clock. Okay. Next on the agenda is 917 Third Avenue. Application coming back.
Since the third matter is going to be carried, do you want to...
Oh, let's do that.
...in case there's anyone in the audience who even...
Okay. There's one other item, 900 Madison slash 201 Memorial Amendment. We're going to be carrying that to... Actually, I'm going to need a motion to carry it to March 20th without further notice. There was a design review committee held a few days ago, and there was not enough time for them to be able to make the modifications.
Move it.
Second.
Oh, no, this is 900 Madison, which is not a design review, but it still has to move.
Never mind. 900 Madison. We're still looking to get a motion to carry it to March 20th without further notice.
And I've spoken to Mr. Karras this afternoon. He's consented. He'll send an email follow-up and the extension of time that's required. And I reviewed the notices for that application, and based on what I reviewed, we have jurisdiction to proceed.
Okay. So can I get a motion to carry to the 20th?
Move it. Second.
Okay.
All right. James Bonanno.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Jack, I'm gonna have...
Are you not eligible to mark your view?
Yeah.
You are recused.
So I'm recused from this. I can't vote.
I knew you were on the long list. I just wanted to show you something.
Okay. Got that. Eric Gallopo.
Yes.
Michael Gunnon's absent. Jim Henry.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Daniel Shanameo.
Yes.
Jennifer Souter.
Yes.
Vice Chair Rick Lambert is absent, and Chairwoman Barbara Karzak.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Jack, excuse me. On that application, I received a notice concerning that, but I'm much further than 200 feet from that location.
Okay.
So I just want to let you know that I did receive...
Where do you reside?
At the Espinosa 321 Sunset Avenue.
Not dropping his right foot.
Not even close.
That's the exact...
I just want to let you know that I did receive it, and I don't feel...
I didn't see on the list. Okay. All right. That's fine. Okay. Next is the number one.
Yep. Yes, 917 Third Avenue.
Okay. For the record, for the applicants, council, Chairwoman Karzak, listen to the tapes, reviewed the tapes and so on exhibits. There's a certification over there that she signed in my presence. Let's mark that B1.
Mm-hmm.
So she is eligible to vote in this meeting. Do you want to give this to the Board? Sorry for the interruption.
Thank you, Mr. Surferco.
Okay.
Thank you, members of the Board. I'd like to call, as my first witness tonight, our applicant, Mr. Ari Marcus.
Okay.
Sir, could I raise your hand? Is there a testimony about giving this matter the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name for the record and spell it.
Ari Marcus. A-R-I-M-A-R-C-U-S.
Thank you.
Mr. Marcus, good evening. I think you would acknowledge that we have done somewhat less in our most recent submission than was discussed at our last meeting with the planner and the engineer. And I'd like you to explain to the Board why that is in fact the case.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Bonanno. I purchased this building, and there may be some miscommunication and misconnect, but I purchased this building a little bit over a year ago. The sole purpose was to beautify what I thought was an objective eyesore. It's a building that's been around for a while, hasn't been kept up to date, and I think we did a really good job of making it into a building that people are going to want to visit. We got a tenant that I thought was interesting for the town. It's in a part of town that's not yet built up yet, but I thought that by putting the money and the resources into this building that we could start that process, and I wanted to be a part of that. I work in Asbury Park. I've been working in Asbury Park for a little bit over five years. I grew up in Mount County. I'm an Asbury Park boy. I've been going, you know, to Stomp Hornies since, you know, for 30 years. So that was the purpose of it. And in all honesty, had I kept it the way it was and just put a band-aid on it and rented it as its current usage, I probably would have made more money. And I probably would, in the future, make more money, but that wasn't the purpose. But I've come to a point where this is the third time I'm before the Board. It costs me significant dollars to come before the Board. I have to pay a lot of people to be here, and we're tapped. Like, I have enough money put aside to finish the project according to how I think the Board would be happy with, or how I think the town is going to be happy with. But beyond that, it's just not economically feasible or worthwhile for me to continue the project. So we have agreed to continue to do more. At every meeting, there was a little bit more. The line kept moving, which I felt like, and we guesstged a lot of time. And now I'm here asking the Board to work with us a little bit if they want the project to be finished. And I think, at the end of the day, everyone will be happy with the project if we're able to move forward.
Okay. Now, if you look at the planner's report, even the most recent report, there are a lot of things that we haven't agreed to do. But I also want to ask you, and again, some of the things we haven't done at the moment, in the planner's report, page 16 going on to page 17...
Is this the updated report?
Yes, it is.
So this would be the report of CCH, Principal Michael Sullivan and Donna Miller, dated, originally dated January 19th, updated February 22nd, 2023?
That's correct. But at the bottom of page 16 and onto the top of page 17, there's a listing of land use objectives that the city has specified. The first one that's cited is upgrade the appearance and function of neighborhood business areas. Do you believe that is one of the goals that you try to accomplish?
100%, yes.
The second one is to encourage new and repurposed buildings to have richness and a sense of creativity in Asbury Park's built environment. How did you approach that?
I mean, you don't have to go so far as to look at the pictures. Look at the project before. What was there? Look at it now. I understand it's a little bit unusual with the building, but I think it really aesthetically looks nice, and I think it's going to draw people to that part of town.
Talking about creativity, at one point, you had a giant mural with the street number on it, which you actually played, had a local artist put on. It didn't find favor with the Board, and it wasn't permitted, and we've taken it off. But is that sort of a reflection of the spirit you brought to this project?
Yes. We could have easily hired an artist out of town, but we wanted to hire a local artist. And we spoke to a local artist who has done murals around town, and we hired him. And we thought we had permission from the town. Obviously, that wasn't the case, even though we were told otherwise. And we thought that that was going to help with the aesthetics of the building. So yes, that was the purpose of that.
The third objective is to ensure first four uses in retail and entertainment districts have an inviting and interesting appearance and are composed of active uses. How did you approach that objective?
Well, we're taking what was a warehouse storage space, and we're changing it to retail use. We have a tenant that's willing to move in. I don't know how much longer they can wait, but as everyone understands by now, is a CrossFit gym, which I think is something the town does not have, and I think it's a use that is going to benefit the entire town.
And lastly, there is a discussion of urban design plan recommendations about scale, amassing, and architectural elements. You did hire a licensed professional architect for this job, did you not?
I did, yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
That's correct, Ed O'Neill.
And within the capabilities of this existing building, do you think that he and you attempted to make the building interesting and pos... and masked and designed in a way that would try to fit this description?
Yes. It was a, like I said, it was an old building that hasn't been touched in many, many years. It was decrepit, and I think we did a really good job with the building.
Now, there are a couple of things that you are willing to do that are not on the current plan that was submitted on February 6th. Is that true?
That's true.
Okay. Is one of them the fact that you're willing to, because we've got literally loading space in the back, you're willing to move the parking spaces closer to the back of the building and open up a strip that could be used for additional planting?
I don't have a problem with that.
In addition, we did elongate the planting areas on both sides of the front parking lot, but not all the way to the right way, as was discussed. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And do you have any specific reasons why you did not agree to elongate these two planting areas all the way to the right way?
I mean, after speaking to some of those that I hired, including EJ, who will testify, we just didn't feel like it was appropriate, that it was right, that if you elongate it all the way back out, then those that are parked in front will have to back out into a busy street, and it is difficult to see if you're just moving backwards. So this gives a little bit more wiggle room. I understand that there was big need for, I guess it was benches or things like that. I just don't feel like it's necessary to put benches in front of the building.
Do you think that benches would add to the extensive voider in front of that building?
There is a little bit of layering around that part of town, and I don't, I think it would. I think you're right.
And is it your observation that people who are parked at the front of the building, facing the building, do they do a specific maneuver in order to drive out frontwards as opposed to backing out of the sidewalk?
Yes, if there's no cars parked to the next of it, they can make sort of a partial K-turn. I know there was a discussion last time about making K-turn into the sidewalk. It wouldn't be into the sidewalk. There's room for the car to go around if need be.
Okay. Now, there was also some discussion about recharge and soil testing for our stormwater system. Have you made a decision in regard to that?
Well, I'll have some experts testify to that, but my understanding is the building we're putting forward is going to be, and you'll correct if I'm wrong, at least as good, if not better, than it was prior to me purchasing it. So this is an ability to get the building and stormwater and all that in a better condition.
All right. And have you heard from your professionals that recharge is not necessary to have a functional stormwater system?
That's correct.
Now, have we learned that we can, in fact, provide 2,700 light-colored fixtures?
Yes.
And are you willing to do that? Lastly, I just want to go over one aspect of this. Has monetary reserves played a significant role in your approach to this building?
Yeah, and more in recent times. Initially, we didn't anticipate all these additional expenses and coming back here multiple times. Obviously, I was wrong. I thought this was like a small project, and I thought because we were trying to make the town better and the building better, that it would have went a lot smoother. But a lot of it was on me, and we're at a point, like I said earlier in my testimony, that I have to look at the finances to decide whether we're going to move forward or not. So I'm hopeful that we'll get approval, and we'll be able to finish the project.
Okay. I think that's all the questions I have. Mr. Marcus.
Before the Board asks any questions, do you mind if I swear in our professions? Can you raise your hand? Some sort of testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your names for the record and your affiliation with the Board.
Donna Miller, Board Planner.
Jason Fitcher, Board Engineer.
Okay. So just for my edification, how are we going to deal with all those things that you said? Are we going to see them somewhere as to what changes were made? So someone else is going to present that.
Yes.
You're just speaking to them just to give us a summary.
Correct.
That's what you're doing. Okay.
Are you going to have a summary of what you're not going to do, what the Board suggested you do?
I'll cover that in my closing summary, yes.
Okay. All right.
And I think it'll also be clear because of our planner and our engineers' testimony.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions from, for our witness before we move on? Any questions from our professionals before we move on?
So, yeah, if I may, I wanted to just clarify. You said you're converting a warehouse use to retail use. Were you referring to just the section of the building that's going to be the fitness center?
That's correct.
But you're still going to have a warehouse use in the building?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. And then you said... No. I can't. That's it. Okay.
Jason, you're okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Does, yeah, does anyone from the public would like to question what was stated by the witness? Anyone that would like to question the witness?
Is it a question or a public statement?
No, it's a question. Public statements, just so that we understand how this works. After every witness comes up, the public has an opportunity to question the person that just spoke. Question. To clarify something that they may have said, to ask. At the very end, after everyone has done their thing, we give, we say, "Public, do you have any comments?" Those comments, you have three minutes to say whatever your little heart desires that we think will be, that will be helpful to the planning board to help make a determination. So everyone is able to do that for three minutes after all the presentations are done. Right? Okay? So that's the process.
If the public has no other questions, I just have one very quick question, Mr. Marcus.
Sure.
Mr. Marcus, do you believe that the health club use that we are proposing for one of the premises of the building is in demand in the city?
I believe it is, yes.
Okay.
Okay. All right. You're next. If no one else has any questions, your next witness.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
With Board's creation, I'd like to call Mr. A.J. Garito, our project engineer.
A.J., you've been sworn previously, but I always swear everybody at every meeting. Just a reminder, please, raise your hand. Is there some sort of testimony about giving this matter the whole truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name for the record and spell it.
A.J. Garito. G-A-R-I-T-O. I'm a principal engineer with Two River Engineering in Colts neck of Jersey.
You've already been pre-qualified, so please state your name.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Garito, we made certain submissions on February 6th, I believe, in order for them to be considered for this meeting. Is that true?
That's correct.
Okay. Can you briefly review for us what we did submit on February 6th?
Sure. We sort of made just a couple of minor changes to the plans, and we don't wait until the 50th.
Jack?
Yes? Can you check if I'm eligible for this one?
Yes. You were here...
I was here last time, but I don't think the first.
That, I don't know.
Okay.
Which was, I can go back.
Which sheet are we looking at?
This is, and this is sheet 3 of 7.
3 of 7? Okay.
Yeah. And then this sheet here, there's kind of one other change we made today, just in reference to some of the comments that your professionals made that I think you would make a suggestion too. But I'll point that out.
This matter, one of the hearings was on November 21st. Okay, you are not in attendance at that meeting. Did you listen to any of that?
I did not.
Okay. So you can participate in the discussion if you're not eligible. Thank you. Is this sheet updated? What's the date on this sheet?
You know, I'm going to call up the sheet that is in your packet, and I'll show the sheet. Maybe that makes a little more sense, I want to.
So what's the updated sheet? We do not have, okay?
I'm going to show you the sheet in your package that I submitted, then I want to show you a sheet that we changed to show you what we...
So the change we don't have.
You don't have it yet, correct.
Well, we're doing that. I have a question, procedural question. On November 21st, attendees, Mayor Moore, Alexis Taylor, as well as a member, Rick Lambert, Yvonne Clayton, Jennifer Souter, and James Bonanno. As everyone up here, I did not call just then, and we listened to all of the review of the transcripts and all that, of that meeting and subsequent meetings.
Not for November.
Okay.
I don't think I missed a November meeting.
I have five eligible members. If no one else has listened to all the tapes, all that hearing and any subsequent hearing other than January 21st, it would be John, Yvonne, Jennifer, and James. It would be five. So that's four.
That's four.
That's four.
Four. And Barbara.
No, she wasn't here in November.
But she listened to the tape.
I listened to this, the last tape.
The January tape.
January. I listened to the last one.
See the next meeting.
Sullivan did the November meeting.
Yeah, if it was on November 21st, I would not have been here.
Right. Yeah, I just went back to the car. Jeff, do you know the dates that you were here besides November and January 24th?
I thought November was our first, our first day.
Yes. Here's the one you were heard again in January 24th.
Correct.
And now tonight, this is your third. If there's, no one has listened to that or reviewed that transcript or watched that video, it would not be eligible to vote this evening. It brings down to four. That presents at the limit, as you know.
I saw Barbara says she didn't.
I didn't. I did not for November.
I'm sorry.
Not the November one.
The saving grace might be that we do have a meeting on Monday night. And if we have to, we can hear it in your case, then we just might not be able to vote on it until next Monday, which gives us time to have the other members listen to the transcripts.
I think that would be acceptable and a better idea.
It's the only way we can do it, because we won't have quorum of members.
Just, just another suggestion.
Yes, go ahead.
You could do whatever you like with this if we actually do the presentation on the 6th. So no one has to listen to any transcript between now and then, because depending on when this gets released, which is usually probably two days from now?
Oh, no, you're not, wouldn't be tonight's meeting.
Oh, would have to be the November meeting.
The first meeting.
Never mind.
Was not in attendance.
Never mind.
The 23rd meeting.
Fair. That's fair.
But if Brick wants to vote next week.
If Brick wants to be a member and vote next time around?
Yep.
You'd have to listen to tonight's transcript.
Right.
And if not, you'd still have quorum.
Okay. Do we know if Brick's back?
We can get a quorum.
He will be back the next week. He said he was missing the ERC and the 2013.
And whoever also didn't listen to January 23rd. So we have a consistent membership throughout the process.
I know. I can certainly listen to November's without a problem.
I would prefer to make our presentation like we're already here.
It's fine.
Spent the fun.
Then we can, actually, we can't vote tonight.
I understand that.
But...
We can hear out the case, have everyone certify, and then take it to a vote on Monday.
Yes.
Okay.
And then everyone doesn't have to, you don't have to have everyone come back.
There was a silver lining in every story.
Well, we have to, so you don't have to, like, everyone doesn't have to come back.
Barbara, she's long to be here.
That's okay. We still will have at least five, if not, and Eric will listen, so we'll have an extra.
We'll hear a little bit of quorum together, so we'll decide the case.
Yeah, and Daniel will listen, so we'll have, we'll have some extras.
Sounds good.
Okay. That's right. A spare, a spare. Okay. I'm sorry. Thank you.
I believe you have up on the screen one of the plans that we did submit on February 6th, and is in the members' packets, right?
That's correct.
Can you describe what that is?
Sure. This is the site plan, sheet 3 of 7. The changes are relatively minor from the prior meeting. We elongated the islands on either side of the, of the building. We did go past the right of way. We went right up to the sidewalk with those islands. And we eliminated pavement markers where there was a loading zone, and that's in the rear of the property.
So the planting areas on either side, the front, that were elongated, were elongated up to the sidewalk?
Up to the sidewalk, correct.
So not in the right of way?
They're in the right of way, correct. The right of way line is here. Before, they were at the right of way line. Then we took them right up to the sidewalk. they were at the right of way line, then we took them right up to the sidewalk. You can see that, that line there is the right of way. Since that time, we did get comments from your planner, and she suggested that kind of area between the sidewalk and the pavement, that that be delineated in some sort of island also. We certainly could do that if the board and your professionals want that also, if we need.
Well, let me clarify, I don't believe Mr. Marcus wants to do that, okay, at the least.
Okay, I just, I just said she, she, my understanding is she suggested that this small area be in an island also. I mean, we could do that if the board wanted. It's just, not all the way down, but to be great with the sidewalk, but the area between the sidewalk and the edge of pavement could also be around it.
So.
So who suggested that?
So if you look at my report on page, I just.
I don't care, but just so the applicant knows, anything that goes in the right of way, you're gonna have to pay for yearly. So I mean.
No, this is just curving sidewalk.
Okay, well, he says it's in the right of way.
Yeah.
Well, if it's in the right of way, the city council is gonna say, you gotta divide it by the dollar amount, and you gotta make a yearly payment. So I don't want any surprises down the road. Well, nobody told me that.
See, that, that, that was one of the reasons that we have a problem with this.
I agree with you. I mean.
And on top of that, I don't know that if we go to the mayor council.
Is just the grass normal?
That they want to agree to something to pay for.
Yeah, if we're making one, we're gonna make all.
Hold on.
So I just want to clarify, this is just curving, the sidewalk paving, and some plantings. This isn't a ramp, or steps, or a vertical structure.
And, okay.
Does it matter?
And if it's awning, three stories up in the city right of way, we still make them pay for it.
Yep, I know.
So, I mean, okay, again, I just don't want them to go down the devil's road, and nobody said, hey, you told us to go to the city right of way, now we gotta pay for it without them being known of that.
I just want to clarify, I've done speaking to the applicant, we don't want to be in a position where we have to make this additional yearly payment.
I agree with you.
I agree with you, that's why we're bringing it up.
We want to try to accommodate the board, we want to be sure.
We want to make sure that you don't have to pay more, and you don't, and you know that, that if you did do it, you'd have to pay more. So let's.
I, I think, I think it's just, it's, any driveway to a house, a building, obviously comes to the street, goes to the property, you get cut to the right of way. I think what we're just suggesting is, this long driveway we have in front of the building is just shaving it back somewhat, so it's a little bit less of a, of a driveway coming in. That, that's all. So I'm not really sure what payments would be needed, other than us taking out, taking out some of the sidewalk with.
Whatever we would have to do to appear before mayor and council, to get their permission, and possibly pay an additional fee, we do not want to do.
I agree.
I just want to be clear.
I agree.
Then we ask them to extend this part of the.
We did, okay.
Well, that's a confusing thing. At one point, we asked them to extend parking, and the next time, we said, do away with the parking and put in plantings. I mean, we've given different directions as far as the same plan. And when everybody watches this tape, you can see what I'm talking about, because it was not an original proposal in the last meeting, like, it was like, well, how about this, how about that, and put more plantings where driveways, which we proposed were. So it's getting very, a simple project to me is getting very complicated. I apologize. I regress, go ahead.
Those have been the changes that we had submitted. After receiving your professional's review letter and talking to my client, the area in the rear of the building, that was a loading zone, it was approximately 10 feet. I'm gonna flash to another exhibit. And this is just basically the same plan, it's, it's, has a, it says draft today, but basically it's kind of removing that loading zone and shifting that whole parking lot closer to the building. So provides about 10 additional feet of less pavement and more green space to the rear of the building. That would obviously provide more area for plantings, it would reduce the, the lot coverage by about, about 7%. So we go down from 94 to about 89%. And that's something we'd be willing to do. I think that's a positive change that we would be willing to do. And then the final revision that we weren't able to get at our last meeting was, there was just a temperature, a question of the temperature of the lights. We were proposing 3,000. The professionals repressed it, we reduced it to 2,700, which ended up being a challenging thing based on the manufacturer and whatnot, but we were able to do that. And although this plan's kind of hard to see from a technical standpoint, unless you really zoomed in on it, but we would submit this to your professionals, and it does have a temperature of 2,700. So the only thing, I think, on the lighting plan now, just because of the building and the close proximity to the property lines, obviously there's greater than 0.1 foot candles on the westerly property line here, just because the building is four feet from that property line. And I'm told if you just, you know, put a fluorescent bulb on the building, it would increase that by greater than 0.1%. But the intent of this is obviously it's a driveway, there's a shared access easement. So I think there's two building mountain lights on the side of the building that provide, you know, adequate lighting on that side of the building.
Are those lights shielded, so that they do not come up wrong to join?
Right, so they're shielded downwards, so the neighbors, who's, who's, who's on that other side? On the side that, that?
I forget.
Of course, it's a supermarket.
Is it a warehouse?
It's a supermarket.
Oh, so this is, we're talking about.
A supermarket.
Oh, so that's, that's always to the supermarket across the street.
Yes.
Okay.
Supermarket.
Okay.
Super supermarket.
Not super supermarket.
Do the illumination levels go a little bit higher?
Super extra.
Just, just on this property line here, because like I said, either there's lights on that, or there's no lights.
Right, but, but I'm getting mixed messages, just trying to clarify. Where, what, when you're saying that 2.1, okay, that's the highest illumination, right? What is on that side? What's it facing? What is that, up there? Up there? That? Is that a road?
West.
No.
Is that a road?
That's a property that shares our access easement. It's lots well, and it's occupied, and it shares our access easement.
So it's a warehouse?
No, it's a commercial.
It's an office.
And the operations.
It's Busker Doom Coffee. It's their headquarters. The one with the black one.
I believe it's the office building for Busker Doom Coffee.
And if you look at page.
Okay, okay. All right. I see. Google Earth is a wonderful thing. Okay, okay. Thank you.
And, and my last question on the lighting, there was a comment about average, maximum ranges and uniformity. Do we, have we been able to adapt to that?
Yes.
So we do meet that requirement?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Are there any other changes on here that we made?
No, that's, that's, that's the only other changes.
Okay. We've covered the full engineering changes that we've made so far?
Yep.
Okay. All right. I don't have any further questions.
So, so the planters are now gonna stop right up at the right of way, right?
No, that's, that's not true. There, here's the right of way, this line here, the planters are extending to where the sidewalk is.
No, I know, but it was, you didn't want to pay, you didn't want to pay, but.
Then you can bring them back, and we'll just go to the end of the parking lot then.
So we'll stop short of the right of way?
Yes, that's for sure.
And everything is shielded, everything is downward facing, so it's not bothering anyone in the, any neighbors, nothing. Okay.
I'm sorry, the, I was gonna say, obviously, I see the property line coming straight down at the end of the parking spaces. You, we have, you guys have pushed out those planter areas?
No, the planters are just gonna go to the prop, to the right of way.
So what are the dumps through there, everything that's still on the plan right there?
That, there was just a little pad with garbage cans.
Okay.
So, so they're gonna be pulled back to the right of way line.
Okay, so they're gonna be inside also.
I'm sorry.
They're gonna be inside drop cars.
Yeah.
Okay, so we should note that that should be changed on the plan, so that, that it's clear as a, as a condition, that it's on, on private property, not in the right of way. Okay. Any questions? Or is that, is that all?
Who's all the questions? I have to.
Okay. Is there any, any questions from the planning board members? Any questions from our planners and our engineer?
Stormwater management, I heard a comment on that earlier. What's the intention of that?
I mean, we, we, we provide three catch basins of, last catch basin, the bubble basin. We are providing some storage volume for the water, but the intent is, what doesn't infiltrate into the ground will bubble out of this basin here and run down the, the existing driveway as it does today. And I, I know your engineer asked for some, some more spot shots, just to show that stuff will be tunneling or whatever, that will be, will be positive pitch, and we'll provide that to his satisfaction, or do what we have to do to prove that that does work.
And did I, do I recall correctly reading through the documents, that the proposed impervious surfaces are less than existing?
Yes, and even now, when we're pulling back the back parking lot by 10 feet, it's gonna be less than it even were.
Okay. And the pipe in the back, is it a stone trench? Is that meant for infiltration?
Yes, it is.
All right. And do you have an issue pulling that 10 feet off the property line?
No, in fact, now that we are pulling it off the property line, the whole curve's gonna be more than 10 feet off the property line, so probably about 13 feet off the property line.
Okay. All right.
How do I write that, AJ?
I'm sorry?
What are you gonna actually do, so I can put it in, so I know that you're gonna revise the plan?
You can say we're gonna, we're pulling the, the rear parking lot 10 plus feet off the rear property line.
The, the underground stormwater recharge trench, I guess we'll call it, is gonna be a minimum of 10 feet off the rear, off of any property line.
In case you will, that note, we'll get that when we do resolution.
No problem.
Okay. When you, when you'd mentioned about the 94% lot coverage, and you're going down to the 84%?
It's probably gonna be about 87%, I believe.
Okay, so on page four of the planner's report, where it says maximum impervious coverage, the standard would be, I mean, the standard would be 80, the proposed will be 84?
It's gonna be, it's about, it's gonna be about, I mean, I can do the exact calculation.
I just need some, a good number.
I would say 89, just to be safe, it might be a little.
So I suppose, because right now it's 94, so we're gonna cut that back, which is good.
Yes.
So you're gonna say 89?
89%.
So that's, okay.
AJ, how do you calculate, I'm seeing 95% existing?
Yes.
And how are you calculating on that, particularly in the rear yard?
So, I think I mentioned this, like, when we, you know, first done this project, there was, the rear property was, the rear line, there was, there were sheds and buildings and gravel and whatnot. By the time we finally got to the board, all that stuff was removed.
How long ago was it removed?
I'm not sure.
More than five years.
My client.
Prior, prior to the application.
More than five years.
I, I, I don't know. We were here, I was here with another application.
It's before him.
It wasn't there when we acquired the property, so it's been more curious.
Any other questions? No? The public, are there any, any questions of this witness?
But then do those make sense? The last numbers don't make sense, right?
Yeah, that's what I'm curious about, because right now it's grass in the backyard, so how is it 95% impervious coverage if it's grass? So you're saying it had been gravelled, but everything was removed, so what, what is, did you do investigatory, anything in the back to determine what the subsoil is?
I'm sorry?
Were there any test pits, or any, anything done in the back of the building to determine what exactly is under the grass?
No, I haven't done anything.
So, yeah, so I have a question about that. If, because to me, it reads as, like, maybe 60% impervious coverage now, and now it's gonna be, and then in the proposed condition, it's gonna be closer to, yeah, 90%. So, I.
All right, so what, if I could just say that we, because of the modification that you did in the loading zone, you have now more impervious coverage, more pervious coverage?
Yes.
Than you did before. A good thing.
Yes.
Right? Not, not the number we want, but it's a good thing. Okay.
But I think, does that affect the stormwater design?
The, I mean, the unwritten rule is if it's within the past five years, you can rely on it, but then when the rules were changed recently, they got rid of that. But it's really, it's not written in Asbury's ordinance, which prevails here.
So, does that mean that we're okay?
Well, so I, I see in a 2019 aerial, there's a building back there, but no pavement. The survey shows building and pavement and all that kind of stuff, which I guess is where the 95 comes from.
That's what we originally had to describe.
Do we have to survey and file, see what date that is?
The survey was 2017, that was.
Okay. So the 2017 aerial.
It's June 2017.
What I'm saying is, yeah, that does look consistent with this survey.
Yeah.
But then the 2019, yeah, 2019 has it as, as grass, so it was June of 17.
It was June of 17, I mean, I think these plans are dated May of 2022.
So, is that five and a half?
No, it's a little less than five.
Four and a half.
Four and a half, yeah.
Twenty-three. When we get to 23 June, then it'll be six.
Yeah. So it was a month after I did the plans, I guess, that stuff from there, from there, I'll come down.
And what, when everything was removed back there, what was the rear yard used to have?
I don't know. I, I wasn't.
Was it driven on?
I don't know, it's just kind of overgrown and.
So, there's a couple ways to look at it. One way to look at it is, it was historically covered with impervious surface, and what they're doing is less than it used to be. I don't know the story of why things were removed. If it was a temporary solution, permanent, I don't know what the issue was there. The other way to look at it is, it's grass today, in which case some stormwater management would be required.
It would be required.
I, I don't think it's, but more than nothing.
Mm-hmm.
So that, that's the two ways.
I mean, I'd, I'd be happy to.
Do you have more? Nothing. Go ahead.
You know, I mean, I've done, done, done lots, done lots of plans like this, and we're, you know, you're talking a few thousand square feet of impervious coverage, so be happy to work with your engineer to help with a stormwater management plan that he finds reasonable, that to say, we've addressed the stormwater management issues, or any of the increase of impervious, since you want to look at it, you know, post when the stuff was coming down.
Yeah. If, if the soil is clean, and there's no issues of contamination that we know of, and if water can move through the soil, we don't have groundwater issue or permeability issue, then I think the design they have in concept will work, they just might have to add a little more volume to it. So I don't have an issue with what he just suggested.
So we could put that in the resolution compliance?
That would be a condition.
That'd be a condition.
Basically, what you would have to do is comply with the minor development.
Yeah.
Part of the ordinance, 30-50 complaints on it.
I, I, I have no problem doing that.
Okay. Anything else? Global, have any questions for this witness? All right, next.
Good. I'd next like to call our last witness, Andrew Janiw, our planner.
Good evening.
I believe this is Mr. Janiw's first formal appearance, was a word.
On this application, yes.
Psalm 33 testimony about giving this man the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name, your record, and spell it.
Andrew Janiw, J-A-N-I-W.
Thank you.
Mr. Janiw, would you please state what your profession is?
Sir, I am a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, as well as a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. By way of background, I have a bachelor's and master's degree in civil engineering from the New Jersey Institute of Technology. My licenses are current and in good standing, as mentioned. I've been a principal in the firm of Beacon Planning since 1997, start 2025 year. I have appeared before the board here. As a matter of fact, one of our first assignments says Beacon Planning was a very early iteration of the Cookman Avenue redevelopment plan.
Those have appeared before the zoning board of adjustments.
I have, I have. I'm currently.
We're good.
Oh, thank you.
Save some time.
Thank you.
And Mr. Janiw, you've had an opportunity to inspect the property and understand the various planning points at issue?
Yes, I've been to the property, I've been to the neighborhood, I've reviewed your ordinances, your master plan, the master plan reexamination, as well as the correspondence that's been coming back and forth, as well as attended the prior two hearings on this matter.
And there have been several variances that have been noted as necessary. One is the fact that our maximum front yard is 24 feet, and exists a condition where 10 feet are permitted, our max impervious coverage, 80% is permitted, and even with our reduction that we talked about, it's gonna be somewhat above that. It is prohibited to have parking in the front yard in front of the building, which is an existing condition. I saw where the planner included the building modules being more than 40 feet. I thought that was a design waiver, but in the current report, it's listed as a variance. The minimum window area is also listed as a variance. Again, I thought that was a design waiver, but I'd like to include it. And the building entrances in terms of being properly.
Articulated.
Demarcated, and also friendly design for pedestrians. I believe we do have a bike rack, but we do not have any table or benches.
That's correct.
Can you address those variances?
Yes, Mr. Don, I also have design exceptions for the driveway width, as well as we, with the planters, we are now providing 17 parking spaces, whereas 19 are required. We are, however, providing an EV space. Oh, and we've eliminated the loading area.
Okay. I, I was going to handle the design waiver separately, it's a slightly different standard, but if you could address the variances first, and whatever else you just mentioned, I would appreciate it.
So in preparation for the testimony this evening, one of the things I did is I looked at your master plan, as well as the 2017 reexamination, and I would like to go through some of those goals and objectives, because obviously, Asbury Park. because obviously Asbury Park over the last 25, so years has been undergoing significant changes, all for the better and it's become a wonderful community. My wife and I, who just purchased here, we're loving it. But the goals and objectives include to provide a balance of land uses in appropriate locations, to preserve the character of the community, encourage economic development, increase park and recreation facilities, accommodate community facilities, and facilitate local and regional circulation. To encourage a balanced development pattern, which will protect and enhance long-term economic and social interest of present and future residents in order to maintain and improve the city's overall quality of life. To encourage the development of a diversified economic base that generates employment growth, provides increased tax ratables and increased income levels. To support the upgrading of substandard properties in the city through code enforcement efforts, education, ordinance amendments, and other initiatives. Upgrade the appearance and function of a neighborhood business district to provide for adequate parking, to promote continued growth and development of the city's economic base. And then moving to the 2017 reexamination, and your planner included some of these in her report as well, to encourage a diverse economic base that relies on year-round activities in a variety of economic sectors, including startups and entrepreneurship, but as no limited, but not limited just to the arts and culture tourism, but including retail, healthcare, light manufacturing, and technology. Interestingly enough, the 2017 reexamination also addressed the B1 district with respect to front setbacks, recognizing that many of the buildings in that district are existing. And one of the recommendations in that reexamination on page 25 was, I believe it was page 25, uh, page 54, excuse me, was to change the front yard setback requirement to a minimum of 10 feet and a maximum of 25 feet in order to provide flexibility for existing buildings by reinforcing the desired character of the zone. So we are just at about 24 feet in terms of the existing setback, but this is the type of condition that was considered in that reexamination. We're in existing structure here. Mr. Marcus has done quite a bit to improve the appearance of that building and would like to continue the vitality of that building through basically taking a somewhat stagnant warehouse storage use and making it proactive for the neighborhood, something that'll be a little more vibrant, something that'll encourage local business and encourage a location for CrossFit training, which I believe is correct and that's somewhat lacking within the city. New economic objectives cited by the city include, again, encouraging a diverse retail mix to prevent retail leakage and to encourage diverse mix of job generating uses, including enhanced year-round opportunities. And that is on point with the type of tenant that's proposed here. We also have to seek reconciliation of this application with the municipal land use law. As you know, the applicant cannot be granted a variance for his own benefit without public interest. And those public interests are reiterated within the MLUL as the purposes of zoning under 4055D. I believe we're on point with several of those, including providing sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial, industrial uses, and open space, both public and private, according to their respective environmental requirements, to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design. And finally, to encourage the coordination of various public and private procedures and activities shaping land development with a view of lessening the cost of such development into a more efficient use of land. I believe those are on point with the objectives of Mr. Marcus's application. We have an existing building here. If we took, take, there are some photos of the building in its prior state, Ms. Miller's report. It was in poor shape. It was an eyesore. Mr. Marcus renovated the building exterior, provided some wonderful facade work. And albeit it's a little bit unconventional in terms of what the goals and objectives are in terms of articulation, we are dealing with an existing structure. And the MLUL is on point, speaking about taking that, working with the model that we have, working with what we have, doing something that'll be attractive, that'll be a welcome addition to the neighborhood, that'll encourage growth in the neighborhood, and doing in a manner such that it's affordable and can be accomplished so that we don't prevent this type of reinvestment in the community when it's really the purpose of your reexamination report, to encourage reinvestment in the community. Having said that, what we're seeking tonight are all known as C variances, or bulk variances. And the MLUL defines two types of C variances. There's the C1, or the hardship variance, which means that by reason of exceptional narrowness, or by reason of exceptional geographic conditions, or by reason of existing structures lawfully existing thereon, the strict application of any regulation would result in particular, peculiar, excuse me, in exceptional practical difficulties and hardship upon the developer of the property. That's the appropriate standard by which we should look at things like the building setback. We have an existing building setback. It's setback where it is 24 feet from the property line. It would be cost prohibitive to require moving that building to be compliant with the ordinance. We also have parking in the front. That's an existing condition. It helps us resolve and reconcile the parking requirement for the building. It's something that's been, I believe this building dates back to 1929. When you look at historic aerials, there's always been parking in front of this building. We are looking to beautify that. We are responding to the board's request for some planting islands. We put a bicycle rack there. We are working with something that is an existing issue and trying to make it better. So I believe those are the appropriate standards. With respect to the other variances that we're seeking, those are what we would consider reconciling under what's known as the balance test, where the positive benefits of that would outweigh any detriment. When we look at that C2 criteria, we have to reconcile if the application relates to a specific piece of property and specific conditions on that property. It does, and these conditions are unique. The purposes of the municipal land use law would be advanced by the deviation. I believe I cited three purposes, which I believe are furthered by this application. And finally, that the benefits of deviation outweigh any detriment. With respect to the negative criteria, we have to address that the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the publichood. And in negative criteria, I emphasize the word substantial because that is the standard by which you deal with the negative criteria. And then finally, that the variance will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan or zoning ordinance. So the most significant variance in my mind that we're seeking tonight is with respect to the impervious coverage, where 80% is permitted. We were proposing 94 with the reconfiguration of that back parking lot. We're looking, I believe, AJ said, not, not more than 89% coverage. The reason behind that is to accommodate the parking that this project will demand. There are three tenants in this building. It was once a warehouse. We now have a photographer's studio. We have a storage facility for, I believe, his pallets. And then finally, the CrossFit. We are hopeful and we agree with the placement of the bicycle rack, that people that are looking to come for CrossFit training will walk or bicycle to the property, as is typical for anyone looking to do some fitness. So we do believe that in terms of the coverage, it's a necessity to accommodate the parking demands, to provide off-street parking that will be appropriate for this facility. There was testimony that even at 17 spots, which is less than 19 required, we're confident that that's sufficient parking for this facility because the, the storage warehouse use really doesn't have any activity. It's a very benign use. It's frequented seldomly, and if so, by one or two vehicles. And it is still a significant square footage within the building. In terms of alternatives, the alternative is not to provide the parking, to keep the coverage lower and to then require more off-street parking. As we know, as a shore community, parking is at a premium to the extent that we can provide it and we can accommodate any issues related to that additional impervious, meaning the drainage, which sounds like AJ and Mr. Fitch are confidently could work out. We can diminish the negative impact associated with that additional impervious. Historically, there has been additional impervious on this property. And I believe, at least in our search of files, without detriment, we're not aware of any frequent reporting of flooding or anything associated with this property. So again, I think we can accommodate that deviation and it does serve an appropriate purpose. With respect to the window coverage in the building entrances, you heard testimony from Mr. O'Neill in terms of working with essentially what is a flat-faced building. So I have some photos here that I can share.
Are you aware if this bike rack is on a concrete pad or on grass?
I believe it'll be adjacent to the island, to the planting island to the east.
Not on grass, it's on concrete.
Uh, AJ?
I think it's on, I think it's on service.
Is it on, on grass or on concrete?
It was, it was out of concrete.
Okay.
So is all the paving going to be concrete, or is it going to be blacktop?
Asphalt.
So until your front, all that concrete will come up and you're going to put asphalt there?
I'm not sure whether we're going to asphalt over it or pull up the concrete, but the final surface will be asphalt. Coming back from last meeting, prior meeting.
So this is the building as it exists today. There was discussion with the architect in terms of creating window treatments here that are consistent. There are two windows that the board asked us to comply with in terms of the design and appearance. So the windows will be consistent. They will be less than the 60% required for the retail store frontage. But we will have a consistent appearance here and the entrances will be storefront entrances and will be essentially defined by signage without additional articulation across the front of the building. Again, the building is existing. It's flat-based. And we are looking to delineate each of the tenants and to keep a consistent appearance across the facade. We put this in context with the neighborhood. So even its current condition, it's a very attractive alternative. So this is now looking between the buildings, this would be the Booster D building to the west and the drive that'll be used to access to the rear parking. That's currently used to access the rear of Booster D. It's a shared drive. There is an easement between the two parties.
Who owns the driveway?
It's actually split. Part of the properties, ours, part of the property's Booster D.
Oh, and then you give an easement on each side.
Correct, correct. So it is, in truest sense, a shared driveway.
So any improvement to that, whether you're going to block top it or whatever, you have to get their permission?
I believe the easement permits improvements to it, but essentially, yes, for the benefit of both parties.
So the back of the building where there's grass now, you're going to have parking there, right?
That's correct.
So that's not going to be blocktop over concrete, right? Because it's just grass.
That'll be new.
So is there any solution, like when you're, you know, is there more porous materials that, you know, a lot of you have great impervious?
Mr. Fitch had discussed there are things like porous pavement and blocks, but...
I mean, you know, when you drive on the Garden State Parkway, right?
Yeah.
Some sections, the water stays on, and some sections, the water goes right through.
Jason, you want to address porous materials?
Not really. I mean, that's for you guys. What are you looking to accomplish?
Well, I'm saying, when you use any of those materials, does it change the ratios then? Of being impervious?
Yes and no. It's impervious, but it can capture some water. There are some best management practices that they would have to follow to do that. It's doable.
And quite frankly, the issue is when you place the...
I think it does though, by the way. They're, they're grading that parking lot to send the water to some inlets, which puts it into a pipe, which puts the water to the ground.
Right.
That's what they're...
No, but we're, we're talking about, you know, impervious coverages, right? We're talking about, you know, stuff that the water doesn't go through, right?
The concern with the impervious coverage is a threshold. So if, if they were reducing impervious, then the runoff built per plan would be less than it is today. If they increase impervious on this site, the runoff's going to be more and they have to capture and handle that water, they have to manage it. That's, we were talking about the threshold. So we're treating it as if they, they're triggering minor development, which is defined in the ordinance. So now they have to capture some water and manage it, which they've done.
Right, and that'll look through the bubble system, which essentially functions the same way. The idea is to get the water to park and to move away from the property, not that additional. And again, just for a little bit more neighborhood context, this is the... This is the building to the west. This is the Booster D building. This is the HVAC contractor to the east. You can see him around the corner. This is now front of Memorial. And finally, the back of the property as it sits today. And then finally, this is the property to our rear, which is the board of it. And you can see that driveway, also the back of the board of that building has parking in the back up against our rear yard.
Do we have that as an exhibit in any way?
I don't believe it's submitted yet.
These photos, no, they haven't been submitted prior.
Since you're testifying from...
I'd be happy to share. You can have my thumb drive, quite frankly.
Well, we should enter them into evidence.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Marie, Desert Ginkins?
You should, you should do each individual as opposed to the thumb drive. So which, pick the photos and those should be submitted.
So the first photo that we discussed is an aerial photograph delineating the property in yellow. It is dated November 18th, 2022. That was when it was prepared by our office. And again, it was a direct aerial view.
But I think that if you just call out what it's called so that Marie can get it, because it's on the upper left-hand side.
Alright, so we call this aerial one.
Aerial one.
What's our next designation?
This would be subject property.
Do you know what our next exhibit number is?
We had exhibit B1 was Barbara's waiver.
Applicants A.
I thought we were up to A6, as at the last meeting.
He's correct.
So we had A6 or we're up to A6?
No, up to A6 is next.
Alright, so the first photo will be A6.
Susan, A6, got it?
Check. Does it make sense to put them in the script and put them on one exhibit?
If you're going to submit them all as one, I have no problem with it being...
Why don't we just describe it?
A6 is consisting of X amount of photographs.
Eight photographs, consisting of an aerial and then the subject property and adjacent properties.
And the access to the rear parking is pretty straightforward?
That's correct. That's, that's correct. So I believe we're talking about the window coverage, the articulation of the building and the defining entrances. I believe architecturally, we've accomplished the purpose behind your ordinance, working with the existing facade. So again, on balance, I believe we've created something attractive, working with what we have, what we can, that's consistent and will be, as Mr. O'Neill's depiction was, a very attractive facade and renovation to a building that again, if you refer back to Ms. Miller's photo in her report, was at one time a neighborhood eyesore. When we look to the negative criteria, we typically look at what kind of nuisances are we creating? Are we creating anything that's an issue with respect to traffic, noise, trash? This is a permitted use. The CrossFit facility is a permitted use. The deviations that we're seeking are really related to the configuration of the building and the improvements on the lot. So when we, we're looking at traffic, we're creating the type of traffic that was anticipated in your zone plan for the type of uses that are approved here. Same thing with noise and trash. It's all at the level that was anticipated with your master plan. We do need to park the patrons here. The alternative to parking them on-site is to allow them to park on the street, I believe. Or a better alternative in terms of providing the space here because we can handle the additional runoff that we're creating from the impervious. And then finally, with respect to the reconciliation with your plan and master plan, the reexamination report addresses the front yard setback and recognition of existing buildings. It hasn't been adopted into your code yet, but there was a recognition in that reexamination that not all buildings are the same in these neighborhoods, in the B1 district. Do have a variety of buildings existing and as well as new opportunities for construction. But it recognizes that the existing buildings should be considered in terms of the setbacks and recognizes the range for those setbacks. I believe we fall within that, so I do believe it's something that may have been anticipated by our planners, but not yet adopted within the ordinance. And then finally, with respect to the coverage, we can handle the impacts of that deviation. Your ordinance is to provide something that isn't a detriment to the neighborhoods. We're not creating any type of excess flow that's going to be a detriment to the neighborhood. In fact, I think we're solving the parking issue here in terms of encouraging the type of growth within this neighborhood that we want to. That brings us to the deviations, if you will, that Mr. Donner had alluded to with respect to the elimination of the floating area, the variance relief for the two parking spaces, the location of the drive and the width of the drive width. These are design exceptions, but I believe, again, that these are largely related to existing conditions that we're working with and seeking to improve, seeking to beautify those with the planting aisles. We're keeping those planting aisles on-site, as was testified this evening. We are proposing the driveway along the property line because that exists today. That's a shared driveway. It will continue to operate as it has for years on this property. And you heard testimony in terms of the parking demand here. We are providing 17 spaces on-site. We've lost two spaces through the provision of these, of the planting aisles. I believe that's a great trade-off, actually, because I do believe the planting aisles will be a... I do believe the planting aisles will be a beautification to the sidewalk element. Does create a nice natural area and we can accommodate the parking. We don't need the 19 spaces. There was testimony to that. The 17 will be sufficient for the operation of this building. And we do believe that the benefit of that is certainly worthwhile of the trade-off.
There'll be no parking in the shared drive, right?
No, no, that's going to be access.
I'll take sure a sort of truck will park in there.
I believe that was actually the neighbor getting a delivery. I do believe, my understanding is that there are offices and they do some baking to the back.
I have no further questions, Mr. Judd.
Or does the planning board have any questions for this witness? Based on his testimony? Do our planners and engineer have any questions? No? Ms. Judd?
Thank you.
The, does the public have any questions to the witness, for the witness? No? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Is it possible to download those photos, keep big copies of them over and get that back to the planner at some point? Excuse me, Ms. Judd?
Yeah. I'll drive by and throw in your notes. No. Got it. Okay, what's next?
Nobody in the public had any questions?
Nope. I believe that there was some closing comments that they were supposed to make.
Yeah, I thought there was some people in the public that had stated.
Well, the comments will come, but I thought there was going to be a closing.
So you want me to sum up first and then give your statement? Okay.
Sure. Unless you feel more comfortable doing it later, but we're running out of time.
You're ready, I'm ready and I don't want anyone else, okay?
We're ready.
I never talk in G3 meetings on this project, but I have to also say that I think we have made the project better, even though at times, some of the concepts that we suggested have been somewhat frustrating to my client who's trying to bring in this project in a way that will make it better without breaking the piggyback. I think a lot of the things that we're talking about, we sort of pull up the moves short, really comes down to, as I see it, really two areas. One was the fact that the planner would like us to extend these planting areas even more. And that had some complications to it. We think that with all due respect to the planner, that what we are proposing to do will beautify the site, still allow people to make the maneuvers so they don't have to back out over the sidewalk and come out at first almost at the K-turn because we're not blocking that area and we're not putting ourselves in a position where we have to go to the mayor and council and make our ultimate approval contingent on whether or not they agree to even allow us to go into it, by the way. And as we said, dollars are a concern. To commit my client to making annual contributions to that is more than he's comfortable with doing. But you know, a lot of the things, the planner's report is so comprehensive and I really admire her for putting that together. A lot of the things that we're doing are sort of expressed in more than one occasion. We have a number of design waivers because we have parking in the front, okay? We also have a variance, a C variance for parking in the front. So it seems to me that if we get this C variance for parking in the front and the design waivers that talk about parking in the front should be subsumed in that. And you know, we know that the ordinance has a lot of provisions to it and it comes up in different ways, but the number of design waivers, I don't think are truly reflected by the condition that we really have. We have fewer deficiencies than you might indicate on first grants. Also, as Mr. Barbido said tonight, all of the design waivers regarding the lighting, we feel now that we have met, they're not in existence. So the other things, we weren't able to put in some additional street trees, but we are now extending a good area in the back of 10 feet that we will do some more planting. And we think that the ultimate effect of what we're trying to do will be a major improvement to a building that dates back to 1929 and it basically almost runs its course. And now we've revitalized it. We've made it something, I think, somewhat unique and definitely better than what it was. And not to do a spoiler alert, but I know that what we're trying to do for this health club has a demand of improvement. I think some of the statements that the public may make will bear me out on that. This is something that the public would like, to be a benefit for the public and to be a nice endeavor that my client is bringing to the area. So with that, I want to thank everybody for the amazing amount of concentration and attention you've given us. And it's been our honor and pleasure being appearing before the board. And I hope that you will agree that what we're trying to do is beneficial and worthy of approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, it depends on how many people come.
I have no idea. Yeah, I just wondered. I want to say so. Should they go first?
Yes, they go first, then we say.
Okay.
They go first, then we say. Is that okay? Do you want to say something?
No, no, I have no problem.
All right. Okay, we're going to, can I get a motion to open for public comment?
So move.
It's not true.
Okay, you got your three-minute.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Any opposed?
Is that Jim that seconded it?
Yes. Okay. You holding on to your keeper of the timer? Okie dokie. Okay, anyone that would like to make a comment, please come to the microphone. And our attorney will take care of the rest. No, that, you're right there. You're good. That's where you are.
You've got your timer ready?
Very good. It's a little short for me there, Mayor.
You're going to be testimonial. So you have to be under oath. So I'm going to swear you in, just like I did to regular witnesses before you make your comments. Then you give us your name, spell it and tell us your address.
Yes, sir.
Okay, please raise your hand. So I'm sorry, testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you. Can you state your name for the record and spell it?
Sarah Murphy, S-A-R-A-H-M-U-R-P-H-Y.
Name your address, please.
35 Shadow Brook Road, Shrewsbury, New Jersey.
Thank you. For yours.
Thank you. I'm excited to speak in front of the planning board. I've actually attended all of the meetings in regard to 917 Third Ave. Ari Marcus purchased this building and he actually is a member at where our health club currently resides in Ocean Township. I proudly took the name Asbury Park CrossFit and I'm staring right now at a sign that says, "Greetings from Asbury Park CrossFit." And one of the reasons I picked Asbury Park is because in my eyes, it's always been a new, upcoming and welcoming town. And I am so excited to be a part of that community. In fact, we've already started to make ties and bonds within the Asbury Park community. I raised money for a nonprofit called The Phoenix, which is to help those who are seeking a sober, active lifestyle. I offer a free class for people like that. I've raised money for a nonprofit for veterans. I've actually sponsored the Asbury Park football team, the high school football team. I met Mayor Moore twice when I went to volunteer at the Boys and Girls Club. And I'm looking forward to making more connections with businesses. I was able to shake the hands of hopefully our future neighbors of Booster Doo, James and Amelia. And they're very excited to have us there. So I wanted to make sure to introduce myself. I want the board to understand that when this does go to a vote, that they're not just voting on a building and parking spots or drainage or the temperature of lights, which my members all here are listening to you talk about. They're actually voting on whether or not to accept a community into Asbury Park. And we're so excited to be a part of that, to the point where we'll for sure ride our bikes to use the bike rack that you guys are asking us to use. I'm very grateful for Ari Marcus. He's somebody who drove to the property before buying it and sat at the property at 5:00 AM and 6:00 AM to make sure it would be somewhere safe for me to run the business. He's somebody who went back at 8:00 PM when myself and my coach, Kieran, who are sitting in the stands, would be closing the doors to anybody who is welcome to come to our fitness community, including those in front of me. I wanted to say that we're more than just a gym. I'm the person that when you lose a family member, I'm sending you flowers. When you have your birthday, we celebrate it with you. We'll actually be celebrating Sam's birthday next week. We hope to come to Asbury Park to celebrate that. I want to get down to, I wrote a letter to my community. I guess it comes in the form of a petition. 599 people signed it, excited for our move here. Five, you want me? I have the petition here in my hands.
If you would just.
That you can't introduce.
We have, I'm sorry, we have your three minutes?
Right.
We understand.
Yes.
Thank you.
The petition you can't introduce because it's hearsay for all those people. We don't accept petitions, but we understand your position.
Yes, thank you.
I think we hear you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to come up and speak for three minutes?
Don't move your hand, get up to the microphone. That's what we're going to close it.
Okay, so please raise your right hand. So I'm sorry, testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Please state your name for the record, spell it and then give us your address.
My name is Russell Salzmann, R-U-S-S-E-L-L, last name S-A-L-Z-M-A-N. Address is 320 Laurelard Avenue in Union Beach.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to say quickly, I can't speak to most of what you were talking about tonight with zoning regulations, but as a member of the CrossFit community that would be coming to this new location, I'm a registered nurse. I know many of our members are nurses and teachers and healthcare professionals. And it's been a really hard few years for everybody. And one of the biggest boons for our mental and physical health has been having a place like this CrossFit gym to go to, to de-stress, unwind, have a community outside of our stressful working environments. So I know Ari and Sarah have been a big help for that. So I just hope you take that into consideration when you're making your vote next week.
Thank you.
And thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Sir, please raise your right hand. So I'm sorry, testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Please state your name for the record and spell it and then give us your address.
Joseph Handwerker, H-A-N-D-W-E-R-K-E-R, 222 Howard Avenue, Lone Branch.
Thank you.
Please speak into the mic. We can't hear you. All right, good evening. My name is Joseph Handwerker. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Asbury Park CrossFit is not just another gym. It's an essential part of our community. Since joining, I've not just progressed physically, but mentally along with skills and positive attitude I take with me throughout my day. Years ago, my wife got me into fitness and we were members of many places and took all kinds of classes. We joined Asbury Park CrossFit about three years ago and those three years, we progressed further with healthy minds and bodies. And we have friends that are like family and bonds with our community that are priceless. As a parent, what is more priceless is the impact Asbury Park CrossFit has on our 16-year-old daughter. She joined two years ago. Coach Sarah has such a wonderful impact on her progress. Academically, she's at the top of her class, disciplined, striving for better and giving her 100% everything she does. She participated in many CrossFit competitions throughout New Jersey and she made Asbury Park proud. Earlier this month, my daughter competed in a competition called Fittest of the Coast in South Carolina. 30 to 40 girls, 15 to 17-year-olds tried out to qualify and 13 were allowed to compete. My daughter, one of them, she came in sixth and this is her first out-of-state competition. She represented Asbury Park very well and we're very proud of her. Back in our day, we were young. We had our share of reckless fun. But these days, with outside influences, internet, Instagram, TikTok, our children are getting influenced in the wrong direction at younger and younger ages. We need a space where like Asbury Park CrossFit, where we can cultivate, find young teens with respect, kindness and discipline in a safe environment and armed with values to carry with them throughout their days. Enough about me. Asbury Park CrossFit has positive effects on all the members. For example, we had a member who came in with gastric bypass, couldn't move, suffered from social anxiety and Coach Sarah modified her workout. Little by little, she became stronger physically and mentally. And now she kayaks, hikes, volunteers for beach cleanups and is part of her community. I'm truly inspired by her and Coach Sarah. Our facility has activities for organizations such as The Phoenix, which is a program for substance recovery. We have many fundraisers for sick children. We've also had competitions with other CrossFit facilities from other towns, bringing people into our area. Speaking of competitions, Coach Sarah created a competition, Babes and Barbells, an all-woman competition to empower women in the sport. It's a great competition and people came from all over, from the tri-state. I could go on with more examples of what a positive impact Coach Sarah and Asbury Park CrossFit has on our community, but that was late and I'm thankful for my time with you all here tonight. I'd like to also personally thank Coach Sarah for all she has done for our family and community. You're a very special person, strong and kind inspiration, great example for us all. I really hope we get approval to continue with the new facility in the heart of Asbury Park.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Please raise your right hand. So I'm sorry, testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Please state your name for the record, spell it and then give us your address, please.
Sure. My name is Melissa Young, M-E-L-I-S-S-A-Y-O-U-N-G. My address is 907 Brookside Ave in Ocean, New Jersey.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say that as a previous resident of Asbury Park, when I used to live at Asbury Park on Third Ave, where I lived for two and a half years, I was also a member of Asbury Park Fitness. So as an Asbury Park resident at that time, I was commuting to this community because of how valuable it was to me. It helped me to get inspired with my fitness, helped get out of that post-COVID funk and it was a great asset for me to meet other members of my community. Again, a thing that Asbury Park itself was lacking. Asbury Park Fitness has been great. It's really boosted my confidence as a person. It's boosted my physical strength, my emotional strength. Sorry. Sarah is a great coach, motivator. She is really an asset to any community that she's in. And she already went through all the different programs and community service that us as a community gets involved in. And I think that's something that Asbury Park could really benefit from. We could all stand here till we're blue in the face and tell you how great we love our gym, but really it's just, we are also a community. And I think that should not go overlooked when reviewing this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Thanks for your time. My name is Timothy Murphy.
Time out. Let's raise your right hand, please. So I'm sorry, testimony about giving this matter the truth, excuse me, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Now I need your name.
Timothy Murphy, 35 Shadow Brook Road, Shrewsbury, New Jersey.
T-I-M-O-T-H-Y-M-U-R-P-H-Y?
That is correct.
Okay, got it.
So I don't envy your position up there. I used to sit on the zoning board in Shrewsbury and it's not always an easy decision to make as you sit up there. My affiliation with Sarah is I'm not only a father, I've also invested in her. And when she came to me and she says you wanted to go into this gym, I was skeptical. But I invested in her and she took this gym from nothing to something. And I wish she had pictures of the gym she has today because it's actually a beautiful gym, clean, and they do a very good job of maintaining it. So as an investor in the business, I'm proud of her. And I'm also affiliated with A.D. Murphy Builders. So when I looked at that building with Sarah and Ari and I looked at what they've done, what he's done today, and I'm impressed. That building was a nice work and what he has done to this point, Ari, I'm impressed. I'm impressed. So I'm impressed with all you guys coming here today to support me. So with all that being said, I know it's not an easy decision up there, but I think it would be a great asset to the town. I see where it was a few years ago.
A year ago?
How long's it been?
A year.
And what it is today, and listen, I think it would be a great asset to the town. And I'm proud of you guys. And thanks to the board for taking the time to listen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments that they would like to send from the public?
Motion to close.
Second. Okay. All right, is there anything that any of the planning board members would like to say?
I'd like to make a couple of comments, and the first one is like, and Jack, Jim, Yvonne know me well enough, like when I get confused, I talk like Slip Mahoney. So they're old enough to know who Slip Mahoney is, so when I say I regret, I apologize. But yeah, I think this is a wonderful project. I was making my own notes, and again, Jack, you grew up here, I grew up here, Yvonne, you grew up here. I don't know what this building was in all my life. It was ugly, and that's what I wrote down. And then I got a better explanation from one of the witnesses. It was an eyesore and it was stagnant, and that's true. And I was being proactive. CrossFits is the definition of Hasbury Park. So there's a couple of things that got to be worked out between the planner, the engineer, and the applicant, which I think are all workable. There's one thing I'm going to be asking the planning board to reconsider, because it was said the mural didn't fit the board approval. I don't know if that's true or not, because I think the mural was painted. The applicant hired Hasbury Park artists to paint the mural well before he was before the planning board, not knowing the laws and everything. So again, when I went by this building, it was painted, and saw the color scheme and everything, I was like, wow. And you know, with the renovations, with the supermarket right across the street, this entire block of this area is coming back, and this really lit up the area. So I would hope like the planning board would say, let's not make them paint over it, let's send it to the mural committee and let them make the decision. Is it a mural? Is it a number? What is it? Maybe it's both, but there'd be something down the road. But right now, I'm hoping like our engineer, our planner, and their professionals can work this out in the next meeting. We can move this forward, and we can finally vote yes on this and move forward. Because like I say, we asked for parking, they gave us parking. We asked for plantings, they gave us plantings. I mean, anything we've asked for, they basically given us. And I think between Jason, Donna, and their professionals, it's something that can be worked out, and this would be a good fit for Hasbury Park. And I think just again, knowing Sarah's history in Ocean Tashaw, what she did and everything, it's a good fit for Hasbury Park, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I also think that it's a great project, that a lot of the conditions are existing. And I think that that is like something that was brought up, that the city has not made some of those modifications that we should because of some of the existing buildings. So it's harder to build or to refurbish a building that already has been here based on the rules that we have in place. I get that. But I appreciate everybody coming out here and supporting these folks that are trying to make Hasbury better. I think it really gives us a great feeling of a community. Like you said, this is a community as well as a building that we're trying to refurbish and to make Hasbury better. Anybody else have anything else they would like to say?
Just, I agree with John about the mural. I actually didn't know that it had been, I saw it in the paperwork that it had been, after the second meeting, that it had to be the new sign. I realized that it wasn't following all the rules, but I actually had the same opinion when I saw it go up. So I would like to revisit that if we are able. And the other thing I just, I should have asked it prior, I was going to make it out loud. The pulling back of the curb, I understand that that's going to happen, and that's fine. But we didn't really talk about whether the plantings could stay the same as they were in the presented plan, because it's getting pulled back slightly. So I just want to make sure that we still have... If it's being pulled back from what's on the presented plan, do we still have enough room to have the plants that are on that plan? I just wanted them to get taken out because of the smaller scale.
Let me ask the applicant. Who asked the attorney?
My impression is that we will have...
For the plants that are presented currently, right? Okay, I realize that there's a dumpster, like a garbage thing, or a garbage something, dumpster that was also there, and I'm assuming that would be moved. I just want to make sure that's worked out, that we're not just going to have grass or something, that the plants will still be within that planting bed, even though it's a smaller scale now.
No, I see there's a question.
We could also put that into the resolution compliance. Am I right? We'll put that into the resolution compliance as well.
I also appreciate all the work that's gone into the project. I also live on Third Ave, and I'm there every day, so I've seen the whole progression. Appreciate it.
Jennifer Whumm, who has spoken as Donna Chua Ward, they're people to make sure of. Thank you.
Okay.
I just wanted to say...
No, we have Yvonne still.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, I think it speaks volumes when this number of people come out to say, we support you, we believe in you, and we want this to happen. So congratulations. I think it's a good project, and I believe it will go forward, but we'll see.
Okay, anyone else that wants to make a comment? Okay, all right, I need to get a motion to carry this application to March 6th, which is Monday?
So move.
Without further notice?
And Mr. Donna, you consent to an extension of any time within which we have to act under the MOU.
And the understanding is that what's going to happen at that point is because we've really completed everything, that the voting of the people that haven't watched the recordings will watch them so that we ensure that we have enough people that can make the vote. Okay? So I need to, can I, someone?
So move.
Okay. Daniel and...
Mayor?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Eyes out.
Okay.
And just carry for Monday.
For vote. Thank you very much.
Jack? I don't believe I was here on the twenty-first.
Do we need five minutes? Okay, can we have a five-minute break? Motion? Motion, motion to five minutes.
So move.
Second. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Call us back into order?
Oh, that's right.
Hey, whoever's here is here.
There's Donna.
Donna's here. She's going to have to sit down, but anyway, go ahead. Let's start her up.
Yeah.
We have limited time.
Got it, okay. And we are calling this meeting back into order at eight forty-nine. James Banana, Councilwoman Clayton?
Here.
Eric Galloppo?
Here.
Michael Gunnan is absent. Jim Henry?
Here.
Mayor John Moore?
Here.
Daniel Shanameo?
Here.
Jennifer Souter?
Here.
Vice Chair Rick Lambert is absent this evening, and Chairwoman Barbara Kerzak?
Here.
Okay, now, we have reviewed the submissions, we have jurisdiction to review this matter.
Okay, just to level set a little bit, we have until five to ten. So please.
Just enough time.
Exactly. That's what I thought.
Would you like it if we wave opening and just go right to it?
Whatever pleases you.
I sense, I can read the room. Okay, so I think we're going to go right to it. My name's... May I introduce myself?
Please.
Okay.
Norton, you're the attorney for the yes?
I am. Thank you for the introduction. Okay, my name is Carlton Cromer, I'm the attorney for the applicant. We're here seeking site plan approval for a little parking lot that's downtown. Sitting to my right...
Along with some design exceptions.
Along with some design exceptions. Sitting to my right is Mr. Friedman, he's the representative of the company that owns the property.
And square man?
Yes.
Please, sir, raise your right hand, please raise your right hand. So I'm sure a testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Please state your name for the record and spell it.
Howard Friedman. Howard Friedman. F R I V E L A.
Okay, Mr. Friedman, are you a representative of the company that owns the property?
Yes.
At four one six Bond Street?
Yes.
Are you familiar with the property?
Yes.
Okay.
Who is that company?
Newell Street LLC.
Okay.
And on the property is a building and a parking lot. What is the building used for?
Storage of cars.
Okay, and how are the cars parked? Is it south parked?
Or south parked.
Okay, are there any attendants?
No.
Are there any employees?
No.
Okay. And you're proposing thirteen parking spaces, correct?
Yes.
And the parking lot is existing now, correct?
Correct.
I'd just like to talk a little bit about the circulation and the flow of the parking lot. Is there a lot of activity in the parking lot?
Not really. Every once in a while, you know, it fills up and then it goes out.
Okay. Is there two-way direction in the parking lot?
Yes, there is.
Has having two-way direction in the parking lot created any problems?
None, no.
Are you aware of any car accidents in the lot?
No.
Have you used the lot or you parked in it and exited it?
Yes, I have.
Was it easy to manage to go in and out?
It was.
Let's move to lighting. Have you been in the parking lot when it's dark out?
It was just there Saturday night.
Did you notice the lighting?
Yes, it's, there's lighting in two different spots. Three on this wall, over here.
Okay, we're going to make that A1, since you're referring to that board. And then there's three on this wall over here.
Were you able to see where you're going with the lighting?
Yes, I was.
I don't have anything further in terms of testimony.
Thank you for watching that. Who uses the parking, the parking spaces? Are the people that park their cars in the, that store their cars in the garage?
Some of the spots are, so there are a couple of spots for those people there that park, that have their cars in the building. People from four eighteen Bond Street. So people from twelve.
On what basis do they use it? Are they renting spaces, or was this parking lot used as parking requirements for those buildings?
The parking spaces are not tied to their uses. So in other words, they didn't apply for zoning approval on the basis of these parking spaces. These parking spaces are rented to them.
Okay.
Okay. Just to level set. It looks like there are thirteen, how many spots now?
Thirteen.
There are thirteen spots now. How many spots do you want?
Well, there were fifteen.
So what are we doing? Meaning, what's the difference? Because obviously, there's something going on today.
Okay.
And something you want to have happen.
Right.
That's why you're here.
Okay, what triggered this?
Why don't we get my planner sworn in and my chair, because they may be able to help.
Okay.
Please raise your hand, so... Testimony about giving the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your names for the record and your affiliation with the board, and yes, you are going to have it.
Donna Miller, board planner.
Jason Fisher, board engineer.
Thank you, go ahead.
Okay. So, go ahead, I'm not really quite sure why we're here. So let's go there.
We're here, I believe, because the zoning officer said that we need site plan approval for our parking lot.
As it exists now, or is it changing?
So they were given a violation notice, I believe.
Please pick up, Donna.
Sorry, Jen. I believe it's part of a zoning violation that they were parking, and it wasn't related to the car storage use. It was these off-site uses parking in this parking lot. And so they were told to cure the violation or get approval. So that's why they're here. Okay, so what is... I don't know the specific... What is the violation?
The violation is merely not having site plan approval.
Site plan approval, so let me ask you. Were these parking spaces ever approved in any context? I mean, when this building got...
I don't think so. They were, you know, this use that we have right now is what the prior guy was using it for.
No, I know, but somebody had to have it approved, because I remember the building was nothing, and then it became a car storage place.
That was before us.
Right, but wasn't those parking spaces there before you got there?
Yeah.
So was this ever approved for anything?
So not all of them in this arrangement.
Okay.
Okay. It did re-strike? Is that what happened?
Partially, yes.
I'm sorry?
That's part of it. It was re-stripped and being used, and again, not by the operation in the building. These are people from other properties using it.
So that's not an accessory use, it's almost like transient parking almost?
Well, the ordinance does permit off-site parking, but it has to be approved as part of a site plan.
But is there a distinction between parking as an accessory use right to the building, right? And then this being a commercial parking lot?
Yeah.
So are we dealing with that now?
Kind of, yes.
It's a permitted use?
But it is a permitted use, it just needs site plan approval.
Yeah, right.
And...
Just like the development, right? They took the old lots and we had to say, yes, okay, they were talking.
And again, there were changes to the zoning ordinance between whenever the car storage use was approved originally and now what he's doing today. So that's why.
To answer, to go back to your initial question, this is, to my recollection, and John can correct me since he's been around almost as long as I've been, that's been a parking lot for years. That was the Marcel Darche complex, lead company, and they used to park their trucks in there. That was, either zoning board or planning board, probably zoning board, turn it back in the late nineteen nineties. I believe these classic car storage guys came in to get approval to put classic cars with inside of that building. And that was a long time ago. So it's always been a parking facility. It's not like somebody went in there and just built a parking lot without the city knowing about.
Jack? I don't want to confuse the issue, but when I was a tenant at five twenty-seven Bangs Avenue, that was a parking lot, and there were dedicated spaces in that parking lot. At the time, it was a parking lot.
For whom?
For five twenty-seven Bangs Avenue.
There's no record of that.
If I recall correctly, it's in the deed. But anyway, it was being used for parking, and that was in the deed to...
So when you lived at five twenty-seven Bangs, you could have parked there?
Yes.
I had an office in there.
Right, that's what I...
Yes, and I forget how many spaces.
I thought it was a residential.
No.
So to my recollection, for the last twenty-some years, it's been a parking lot. The question I have is, does it affect Bangs Avenue and the building to the east, to what you're doing? Are you cutting off any access to those buildings that they may have a right to? How it is, is how we bought it, and we haven't changed anything in access.
And so, am I correct in saying that you don't want to change anything?
No, we're just here just really conforming, existing, validating existing.
Everything stays the way it is, that's what you're asking for.
Yeah.
But you need us to approve that.
Correct.
Okay.
The only other comment that I would have is that since there's a question raised about the width of the aisles, if it were, Jason, if it were made on the way from Summerfield in and out at Bond, would that solve the issue of the aisle width?
The tricky thing about the aisle width is, you know, adjacent to Summerfield, you have twenty feet from parallel parking to parking. The gold standard is twenty-four feet, which allows a vehicle to make that maneuver. Twenty feet can be done, it's tight, depending on the kind of car you have. And then on the other side, you have sixteen and a half feet, whereas the parking space itself is eighteen. And then on the other side, you have sixteen and a half feet, whereas a parking space itself is eighteen. It's, it's tight, that sixteen and a half. So imagine if you're parked in one of those parking spaces and there's two cars parked in the parallel spaces and you want to back out of the, the ninety-degree space.
You have to maneuver possibly.
Yeah, that's, I'm not saying it can't be done, but I certainly don't want to.
So, so the, uh, making it one-way does not help that issue?
No, the, the one-way, two-way doesn't make a difference, it's the operation of those parking spaces.
So to eliminate like the parallel ones?
If you.
Right.
If you put them at an angle, would you lose the space?
Um, well, if you were to keep the parallel space, the funny thing about parallel parking is when you angle it, it actually pushes them out further.
No, no, but no, but, no, not the parallel ones.
No, I'm saying if, if you.
You turn those far.
Put the.
The nineties get pushed out further.
On the east side of, okay, yes, you're right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So, yeah, that was kind of a highlight of our review letter, that, you know, if you were to ask me, what's the biggest thing that I saw, that'd be it.
So on the Bond Street, the Bond Street spaces, you're saying there's only sixteen feet there?
Well, they're, they're not parallel, the parallel spaces and the ninety-degree spaces are not parallel to one another. On the narrow side, as you look at the exhibit, it'd be the right side, that's sixteen and a half feet. I don't know what it expands to, I could try and measure.
You have any suggestions, Jason, as to how that could be alleviated?
Um, hang on, let's see, if I, if I go to the, uh, the left end of the left and parallel space by Bond, and I measure down to the back of the ninety-degree spaces, I'm getting roughly seventeen and a half feet. Let me check the sixteen and a half, make sure this is measured properly. Yeah, that's about right, so you, you gain about a foot.
If you're gonna speak, you have to be under oath.
Want to swear in? Don't raise your hand.
Yeah, so I want to demonstrate. If you stop.
First, let's swear you in and qualify.
Raise your hand, so I'm a swear testimony about to give this man the truth of all truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name for the record and spot.
Donna Bullock, B U L L O C K.
Okay, Ms. Bullock, are you a licensed engineer?
Yes, I am.
Have you appeared before this board before?
No, I have not.
Have you appeared before other boards?
Yes, I have. Um, I am educated from the Jersey Institute of Technology, where I received my bachelor's degree in civil engineering. Um, I've worked in various firms and oceans in Monmouth County. Once I obtained my professional license, I gave a professional testimony for various companies. And then I had my own company called Three D Engineering, uh, was opened, uh, for about eleven years. And then 2008 rolled around and I had to go back to work for others. And at that time too, I also was providing professional testimony between studying boards and planning boards. And now I'm at Morgan.
So you're currently licensed in the state of Jersey?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
All I wanted to do was point to where he was getting the measurement, from the first measurement, from here to here is sixteen and a half. And the measurement from this, uh, aisle where the striping to here is roughly seventeen and a half. And the area behind this is, reasons uneven, is because there's vegetation growing there. Shrubs growing along the, along that face of the wall.
How about the middle on the, yeah?
No.
So the, the, the two parallels, so the, the, yeah, from that, so from the middle line that separates the two parallels.
Well, I would assume that would be seventeen, just because this is sixteen and a half, seventeen, seventeen and a half.
Well, I, I mean, I'm just throwing this out there, if we cut down some vegetation and move it over, would, is that something that would lessen your concerns?
My, the only thing I have is the dimensions for the car scale that operate. The, uh, you know, removing vegetation for pavement, you know, I would defer to the, the board on that.
Right, but it's only like a foot or two, right? How much are they picking up?
It's tiny.
It's not gonna solve the ten-feet deficiency.
It's not gonna go through twenty-four feet.
Yep, I'm just guessing, it looks like it's about, goes from two feet to approximately four feet.
If it's really existing parking.
The, uh, wider.
Because it's not striped properly?
No. Keep in mind, though, I'm just pointing this out, this is not new. This is stuff that's been going on for a while, has been working, no complaints. Nobody's saying, hey, I can't get out here, or hey, this guy bumped me, nothing like that has happened. So it may not technically meet some technical requirements, but we're doing the best we can with what we have, and it's working.
If I can mention, um, that the two parallel parking spaces that we're speaking of currently are three spaces right now. They are tight, the, the striping now out there is three spaces. What we're doing is we're taking those smaller parallel parking spaces that are even more difficult to get out into two, and we're moving that one space to this side of lot one, um, so that it would be even more accommodating for parallel parking on these spaces. And the only other change we're doing is we're adding a handicap accessible parking space. So those are the two changes to the striping that are out there now. Also, the, uh, the striping right now is along or outside of the boundary line. Um, we are pushing the proposed striping in a foot or two so that we have, uh, compliance with keeping the spaces inside the boundary, but we can't leave that five foot setback, uh, parking within a, from a right-of-way.
And so will you move the striping over to the, was that Summerfield then? So what, there was, there was no space there before?
There was no striping, but people parked there.
Okay.
So what, I'm guessing this has been going on for X amount of years. The new zoning officer sought and said, hey, guys, you're in violation, and that's why you're here.
Yeah.
So how many years have you owned it?
Okay.
Do you, do you own the indoor facility also?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the parking lot and the building are one property.
Um, before me, I'm gonna say six, seven, just guessing.
Because this has been like this for a really long time.
Yeah.
So, so the, is, is it required that we need a, an ADA spot?
You know.
We're not sure, that would be, Jason, can you go on?
Yeah, that, that is a, it's always a tough question when you have something existing. I, I believe that if you were to read the rules very carefully based on what they're proposing here, that you don't need one, but I.
Well, you're less than twenty-five spaces.
I'm gonna write it in pencil, and I'm gonna say, I don't think you need one, um, certainly doesn't hurt to have one.
Well. Well, that doesn't give us guidance.
No, it's, it's a tough subject. This is, that very question has been asked at the state level by numerous firms, I'm sure you've done it in the past. And you get the answer I'm giving you from the state.
All right, you never had an ADA spot.
No.
You're now creating an ADA spot, which gives you one less spot.
That's correct, well, no.
Because you, because you shuffle things around.
These stall sizes are eight and a half feet instead of the required nine. That's one of the, uh, the highest standards they're asking for.
We don't require them.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misspoke.
What do we require?
Eight and a half one, how's that?
So, yeah, we're losing a spot.
But you've got them arranged so they don't drift out into the right-of-way now.
Correct, that was the whole contention, yeah. To need as much of the warmest criteria that for parking that we could.
We do came to the conclusion that we don't think we need the handicap spot. Um, but I think there's a concern that somebody may say otherwise, and, um. It's a measure of safety, yeah. But, um.
Do you want to bring up the EV?
For the EV, uh, the electric vehicle charging station, we don't believe that it's required under the statute because the statute says twenty-five spaces or less, you don't need to provide one.
Except that it says it's a retailer.
Right.
It's a what?
A retail.
With twenty-five spaces or less, and you're not a retail.
Uh, it's.
There's no retail use.
Well, I would say that car storage is a retail use.
The parking isn't a retail use, it's rented.
It's, it is.
Residential.
It is rented, but it, I didn't find any definition for retail, but I, to me, it would be any commercial purposes.
It actually says that, um, from the U.S. Department of Energy, um, citing the same thing, uh, retails that provide twenty-five or fewer off, off-street parking spaces are not required to provide or install any EV charging stations or make-ready parking spaces.
Do you have a mercantile permit for a retail operation on that property?
I assume so, I would, I don't assume, we don't have retail.
Okay.
Then you need a mercantile license for.
He means, he means retail by spice, by what you, by goods, but.
Do you have a, do you have a mercantile license for a parking lot? And if not, then a parking lot under city ordinance is closed for specific, it's gotta be stretched, you gotta have bumper stops, you gotta have everything. I don't see them there, so.
Well, we, okay, I'm sorry.
Are you putting them in?
We're, we have those concrete.
Okay, you do have, okay, okay.
Yeah, and, um, keep in mind that I think that there's a distinction in the zoning code between public parking lot and private lots. And ours is not a public lot that's open to the public. Ours is just limited to people within the vicinity.
That's still public?
Yeah, what are they, what are they, marshals?
You're leasing space to non, non-owner, non-owners. So that's still public.
Okay.
It's, if someone moves out of the house and doesn't need the space anymore, and I move downtown and I want to rent the space from you, I'm a member of the public, right?
Uh, it's, it, but it's not advertised or open to those people.
And it's commercial.
Yeah, it's, it's still, it's still a public operation.
Then that indicates, then that we're a retailer.
Yeah.
And for a retailer.
If we, if we push it too hard, then I gotta adjourn the case and take it to the zoning board to get a definite, get the zoning board to make a declaration as to whether or not you're a retailer.
Under a state statute?
Any, any statute. The zoning board is the final arbiter of definite, of, of anything that needs a definition or clarification. That's the land used, and you don't want to go there.
No, I, I don't want to go there, I like to.
Stay right here.
To stay right here.
Yeah.
So are we saying this is a retailer?
I, I, I think the intention of the statute was the smaller lots don't need to incur this big expense because it's not really justified. That's the gist I get from a statute that says you have to provide this, but if you're a small guy, you don't have to. That's the gist and the intent that I read of the statute. I'd be happy to share it with everyone, so everybody could take a look at it, but that's the gist, uh.
Are you referring to the EV?
Or we could just add an EV station.
Is that what you're referring to, the EV ordinance, when you say the statute?
Yeah, this statute, the state statute that requires.
Because we haven't adopted the model ordinance yet.
Right, but, but it's going, but the state statute, I mean, has the same language, right?
Yeah. So for this situation, it would be, um, less than fifty spaces, we need one EV station.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we can add in EV station?
Or you can just, you don't even have to do the actual thing, you just have to make it ready, EV ready.
Make ready, you can make ready.
What does that entail?
About ten percent instead of a hundred percent in dollars.
You run power to the space without actually putting a charger on it, so that in the future, if you wanted to recharge there, all you gotta do is not charge it on.
Which is the more expensive part of the, of the thing.
I hear from Bull.
I was gonna stop.
Um, well, how about we make it a condition as to whether or not it's decided that it's required?
Board's gonna do that.
Jack, you're, you're, oh, handling all these legal matters.
No, no, I'm not gonna, I'll tell you right now, I don't think you're, you're, you don't get the exemption because you're not a retail operation in truest sense of the word. But if all they're asking you to do is put some electrical power to a spot there, it doesn't sound like it's too great of a burden or too great of an expense, and it should be spending a whole lot more money on legal fees.
So EV ready means running the line to there, not installing that actual station.
Okay, right.
Let's do it. I knew you were reasonable.
Any other concerns?
So are we okay with this?
The, with the driveouts isn't ideal, but it has been operating this way for a while, so it's kind of proven as, as naddish. So, I'm sorry, so who, who parks here again? There are some residents who live?
No residents.
No residents.
Four-ten, four-twelve, and four-eighteen.
So why don't you tell us how many spaces you're renting out?
So, this is for.
What is that, space and company?
This is space and company, this is Kirk, and this is the chiropractor.
The chiropractor, right?
Um, I believe they have four, one, and seven, that's twelve, uh, no, six, excuse me, six. And then we have one extra space plus the handicap.
Is that for their, their customers or for their employees?
So they're for employees. So all the space business.
So all the spaces rented except one?
Correct.
And it's all employees of businesses or the people associated with those adjoining businesses?
Correct.
Of the spaces that are located in the side.
They're not, no. I think it's pretty fluid, not everybody.
Well, I mean, do they change, I mean, do the people park where they're supposed to park?
He's kind of an easygoing handshake guy, I think he's just kind of.
Who?
Mr. Friedman.
No, but he's not there seeing who's parking. No, what I'm saying is, do they honor the space, honor what space it's supposed to park in? Doesn't park in the counter, but you don't know, nobody's complaining.
Right. Well, the, the demands are likely different. Um, I mean, I think this demand is different than this demand.
Why, why, it's not customers that are parking there, I thought it was just employees, what's got to do with demand?
Well, the, the space and company people aren't there twenty-four seven, uh, you know, five days a week. They're likely are there when they're showing a house or something along those lines. This person, I think, is by appointment over with the chiropractors, I don't believe he's there all the time. So it's, it's kind of, I think that's the reason why it's not always full. I mean, there's that overlapping demand.
You don't, there's none leased out to like the restaurants and valet parks and stuff like that?
Is there a sign up saying private parking?
There is, there are signs over here saying private parking, and I think there's signs over here.
Does anybody mind here? Like if, you know, people at night just park there and you tell them out or something like that?
Um, nobody, well, I mean.
We have communication, if someone from the outside parks there.
I just found a new place to park on, this is Saturday night.
Someone just said to them, hey, that's private parking, you're not supposed to be there.
Is there a sign parking or?
Yeah, there's, there's a sign.
A sign.
A sign.
A sign.
A sign, so, you know, parking space one through four. Oh, a sign, no.
Okay.
No, again, and there hasn't been much of a problem because I think their parking demands don't overlap.
So we all just found a new place to park on Saturdays?
Well, I call them up and ask them sometimes, but, uh, Mr. Moore and anybody else in the board, I'm sure Mr. Friedman would.
I'm only kidding.
Gladly accommodate people. Um, so I don't have, I, I don't have much to add. I hope everybody is, um, I like to say my application was easier than the persons before. I think this may be truthful this time.
Does, does anybody, do any of the planning board members have any questions for the witness?
Jack, do they have to get a mercantile license?
That you'd have to ask the city clerk.
Okay. If one's required, we'll get one.
That can be a condition.
As, as you kick it around, we've already talked about the aisle width. Another thing to consider is if you want signage and striping like the stop bar and that kind of thing, one-way, do not enter if you want to do that, you know, just something to think about.
So we'll be happy to put directional signals if you want, and put a stop. So we'll be happy to put directional signals if you want and put a stop bar if, if, if the board would like that too.
Would you suggest that with the stop bar and the directional...
How's it operating today? Is it two-way?
Yes, it's operating two-way. I, I think because it's not a very intense parking lot, it's been operating fine.
So, you know, if, if we were to do this by the book, first of all, the aisle would be wider. I think we passed that. Because the aisle is narrower, it would typically be one-way. But again, it's been operating this way for a while. I don't know if that's something you wanna do. Depending which way the traffic flows, there would be stop signs on either side with a stop bar or a one-way sign with a do not enter on one side and a stop sign on the other. That's all, you know, just a little bit of traffic directing.
In fact, we could put the stop bar and then write the word "stop" under it. Sometimes the stop bar just gets painted on, you know, and it's assumed. But we could, you know, put on the case the word "stop" because the location of the signage itself might be a little tricky and based on the configurations of the empty space.
Sorry.
Is there any support for reducing the size of the curb cut look on Summerfield?
It was pre-existing and I think that...
It does one from where this land, the, this open space is. There is a depressed curb from that all the way across to the front of Lot 1.
Yeah, it looks like there's at least 20 feet of depressed curb that could be closed up and make that a nice legal on-site parking space, James.
Now, there might be a handicap spot right here.
That's right there.
It's on the backside of...
This one?
Yeah.
Oh, that one.
It's currently a space that is...
So there's some existing conditions in the roadway that may have to be considered before the full face curve?
Well, if full face curve was there, it'd be a legal parking space because right now it's a parking space next to a curb.
But they took it already, what the handicap spot. It's not a legal space. Because it's got a curb cut on this one.
Technically, from driveway, there's the curb cut.
So if somebody wanted to, like say the cars aren't parking head in on the Summerfield side. So wait, so how is that loading dock used?
Where's the loading dock?
Under the canopy?
Under the canopy.
Yeah, there's an overhead door.
That's the entrance of the building.
How does that, how does that get used? Is that for just cars drive in?
Yes.
Any kind of trucks or car carriers, no trailers?
But that's open space under the canopy, right? That's necessary for sure.
It has an overhead door to go into the building.
No, but the, isn't the overhead door in the, it's in the building, right?
Yes, yes.
Underneath the canopy, it's completely open, right?
Yes.
Yeah, it could have been open. Don't tempt us.
No, but he's saying that's, that's access into the building for cars. So how, how frequently does that happen?
Cars coming down. No cars parked over here. This is, this is a driveway that's the entrance.
But that's the question.
No, there's, there's nobody parked there.
Okay, that's the answer.
That's like, that's like falling control, right? Is that heated?
I think there was a green stack when you were green packaging. They had some configuration...
No, no, you don't, you don't heat it.
Does anybody else have any other questions for the applicant? Any other questions from our professionals? Any questions from the public? No questions from the public? Okay. Do we have any, or anything else?
Nothing further, thank you.
Okay. All right, do the, do our members have any comments that they would like to provide? Well, actually, we'll open it up to the public. There's no, there's no public comment. Nobody's here. Okay, any, any comments from the public, from our planning board members?
Only thing I'm thinking is like, in the resolution, it should meet all the requirements of a city parking lot as per the ordinance. Because it is a parking lot.
It is, it is a parking lot, though it is a private, essentially, parking lot for those buildings.
And some of those conditions could not be possible to meet with the configuration that's here.
What, like what?
You had mentioned that all parking requirements for city parking would, you would have to comply. There's design exceptions that...
Yeah, I'm trying to look up the definition.
There's design exceptions that won't go along with...
Like the, the aisle width isn't conforming, so they technically wouldn't do all the requirements for license.
Wave that. I'm talking about, the only thing I can remember is it's gotta be striped, it's gotta be wheel stops. As much as you say you're on the plan, I can't find something.
It's supposed to be fenced, too.
It's gotta be what?
Striped.
Is it supposed to be fenced and...
No, parking lots don't have to be fenced.
We could require them to put the wheel stops in at the 90-degree spaces. They've already... Strike that, that's when they're playing, strike it. If we wanna do the, the stop bar and the one-way traffic pattern, that's, that's fine and definitely do that, I think.
I'm gonna defer to you because you're the parking expert.
Sure, I mean, listen, wheel stops are gonna be good because it's not getting the building. So I mean, if you wanna make enough wheel stops at all 90-degree spaces, that would be compliant with our, our new parking laws. The traffic pattern right now is kind of just, you know, see what you get. It would be smart to do a one-way traffic pattern and just have a stop bar on one side. Probably, I would think, enter on Bond Street and exit on Summerfield because of where the garage door is for the inside.
Yes.
I mean, you know, paint a stop bar, paint a stop, like the stop order that she said, or the sign would be in the way. Donna's comment about the driveway curb cut is something that we should at least talk about. I mean, if we want them to fill that in or not. It's, again, it's existing, we don't have to make them do it. We are already using that space. More opportunistic than that. But that's what I would say. And Donna already mentioned the EV space, if they're gonna make that right, then it's just icing on the cake for you.
So what, so what do you think about the EV?
Well, it's icing on the cake. We have, the, the EV ready space that we didn't have before.
Yeah.
If we ever need, if they ever need, it should sit in us. But then they can easily just put right in.
Right, but it's just a question, I'm guessing that's a question of if it's required, then they would do it. But if it's not required...
Well, that's, that goes back to what we're talking about with the old, we have one of the very...
The jack.
The rule is...
So we may as well put it in so to, to cover ourselves.
I think putting it in as a make-ready space, it shouldn't be a huge burden for them. And I think it's advantageous for the whole transportation network.
Okay. All right, so we were saying wheel stops at the 90 degrees, a stop bar, one-way, in Bond, out Summerfield.
Yes.
Right? And EV-ready.
Right, it would have, you know, the covers falling, the sun, that's right.
In Bond?
In Bond.
In, on Bond.
In Bond.
Right there.
Wouldn't, what, would, in Summerfield and out Bond?
You don't care about that.
Well, but we're...
I don't care about that.
The reason I said in Bond is because the garage door is facing Bond. So they come in on, on, on Summerfield, they're gonna have to make this, you know, wide turn probably to get in that canopy and down. Which, again, with the drive aisle width, it seems more risky.
Yeah, in Bond is this way, right here.
You're the one who said that the handicap space is...
Bond is one way north, isn't it?
One-way south.
Yes, it is.
I'm sorry, Bond is one-way south.
Yes.
Yes.
Any reason north.
Yes.
They don't care if they turn when they exit.
I could keep it two-way, I think, because the opposite prevails. If you're coming into the ramp this way from Bond, you're heading it out.
The right turn around, I think, I would think the right turn around would be easier with, is it, I mean, what do you think? Is your, is your property?
It's a little bit of a... Maybe it's here, if it has an aisle with two shade trees on it, I think it would be easier to go out on Bond. So I think using it two-way just allows everybody to function well.
I don't, I don't feel strongly about it one way or another regarding in Bond and outbound.
To me, it just goes without the turning movement. That, that kind of make or break it. If he's saying it's too difficult to make, we can leave the way it is. Again, it's not a public lot where everyone's coming and using it. So it isn't a super huge concern. It's mostly private as far as, you know, their parking business and the business next door.
Yeah, the turn around.
Yeah.
I didn't mention the signage again. We had to have, you know, do not enter and one-way. The doors would be starting to, you know, mix with the entrances and maybe too far off to be seen on top of the traffic. That's why I recommended the stop made.
Okay, we'll have the stops.
Yes.
Any other comments that people would like to make besides wheel stops, the stop bar, or the painting of that, of the sign of the stop?
Paint the stop bar.
Paint of the stop bar. EV, one EV-ready space? And you're... And sorry, and you're 180.
And we're not gonna do the one-way traffic? That's it, okay? That's fine? We got it?
It, it works. And it's not heavily used. That particular lot is not heavily used. I pass by it all the time, but I'm not testifying.
Just let me roll you in, okay?
I, I use those businesses. I get it. I see them all the time. So I'm, you know, I'm okay.
You owe seven years' worth of parking.
Yeah, there you go. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to approve this application with wheel stops at 90 degrees for all the 90-degree lots, a stop bar slash painted stop, and one EV-ready spot.
I'll second.
Second.
Okay, James is seconding. James Benano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton? It's you.
Yes.
Yes.
Eric, I can't see Eric.
Eric Gallo. Michael Gunnin is absent. Jim Henry?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Daniel Shanameo?
Yes.
Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rick Lambert is absent, and Chairwoman Barbara Kerzak. Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
Passes.
Thank you.
Twenty minutes to spare.
There you go. Okay, we're going to, now I'm gonna need your help, Jack. We need to go into executive. You, you lead the way.
Yeah, all you need to do is clear the room. The participants, we can go into the executive session and discuss the fee structure and staff, adopt the resolution, and we'll school the rest of us.
Okay, if, if you guys can decide if you wanna stay to find out the outcome or if you just wanna go. It doesn't matter. We, it's, you don't have to be here for the adjournment of the meeting.
What about the videos?
Still. I don't know, but, but let's, let's first, on the executive session, the video goes off. So we have to talk about that?
Yeah.
Okay, so we need to clear that out. Well, I'm sure that he can hear us. You go ahead of that discussion.
I got you.
I'm glad you know.
Thank you.
Sorry to bring you back into session.
That's up to you guys. Yes, if you could, yes, for yourself, yes, but for Donna and Jason, they don't have to stay if they choose not to. Hi, Donna. It's up to you, but not, up to you but not here.
Are you leaving in there?
No.
We're leaving here. You're, you're, you're leaving, we're staying.
There is no more in there.
There is no more. I've never been in there.
You don't wanna go in there. It's a studio now. It's a studio, yeah. First it was storage. Nice. Good night.
Good night.
Good night. Okay, I'm sorry. Jack's gone? Okay. I'm not sure how we decided we're in executive session, but we are.
We, yeah.
We go into executive session.
Second.
Okay. Aye. Okay, Maureen, you're on. Rule called. James, Councilwoman Clayton? Eric Gallo?
Here.
Jim Henry?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
Daniel Shanameo?
Yeah.
Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
And Barbara Kerzak? Here. Yes.
So you're back in order, so...
We're back in order.
Now, now you can make public what you decided in terms of fee structure.
All right, we did, we did decide on, we did agree for the inside fee increase because they have not received an increase since 2013. We did agree to Michael Sullivan's increase of $10 an hour.
And I didn't request the increase.
Not, not that this time, no.
No, no, no.
And you're good.
No, I know.
You're good to go. So, so motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor? All right.
Okay.
Yeah, and the board, okay, wait, wait, I'm sorry. The vote, you should be voting on those fees.
Okay.
Yeah, do a vote on that.
Oh, we did, didn't we? We did.
We did.
We did during executive.
No, it's gotta be on the round.
Okay, all right.
It's not, it's not part of the...
Okay.
Let's go back in. Let's reopen the meeting.
Reopen the meeting, gotcha.
Move to reopen. Then the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, yeah, let's take it one at a time. Inside fee structure, what is it going to be?
It's, it's, it's going up 10% because they haven't received an increase since 2013.
10% or 10...
Across the board, 10% per hour.
Okay.
As proposed.
As proposed.
As requested.
As requested. As requested.
That's consistent.
Right.
And now, vote on that, mo- motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by the mayor, second by Mr. Henry, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposition, ayes have it. Next, let's talk about CCH.
Mr. Sullivan. CCH. Mr. Sullivan requested a $10 increase over last year, and we agreed, so...
As proposed.
As proposed.
Okay, and requested by CCH.
Was requested by CCH.
Perfect. Any discussion? Motion?
So move.
Second. Mr. Shanameo, Councilwoman Clayton, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Now you can adjourn.
Right.
Most adjourned.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, aye. Second, adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed, ayes have it.